Okay, ready?
Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Charnell?
Here.
Councilmember Tolles? Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember LaCron? Councilmember Spelitch?
President.
Thank you. Do you think there's technical issues here that they haven't called back in yet? Do you know? Okay, well, we'll move on then. Thanks. So our first item is reports by mayor and council members, and obviously, these aren't normal circumstances or meetings that we're used to. The coronavirus is on everyone's mind, as we know. Hopefully, many have seen our statements that we had on Facebook and websites and all over the place in the last several days, and a lot is changing very rapidly, as we know. So much has changed since we had the visit from Channel 3, and we had the Purim Dinner and the kite festival and days where we were gathering without pause. But now, we have knowledge that we can use and direction to help us stem the tide of the spread of the COVID-19, and we'll keep all as safe as possible, maintaining continuity of services for our citizens. I'm going to ask our town manager to update us on some of the things, the actions that we've taken and that we're going to be continuing to take as necessary, and we gather information every day and almost every hour from the state and the county and the United States. So Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor has indicated, the Town of Fountain Hills has taken a number of actions based on guidance and direction from public health professionals ranging from the CDC, Arizona Department of Health Services, and Maricopa County Health Department regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. We've also heard from the White House on guidelines. The following are coronavirus-related actions taken by the town. Starting last Friday, cancellation of special events at parks and the community center, including gatherings. Our Irish Fest was canceled, which was to take place on Saturday. A number of activities that normally would be taking place in the community center have been canceled, and those were canceled last Friday going into the weekend. Through today, the community center was limited to drop-ins only, with a complete closure starting tomorrow as planned. Today, because of the election going on, we opted not to have that take place until tomorrow because we didn't want to confuse people as to the hours. Today, it's St. Patrick's Day, and we would have had the greeting of the fount had the coronavirus not been occurring. We've also have had the boards and commissions' meetings postponed until May. Starting with tonight's council meeting, you'll notice that there's no public here. Unfortunately, based on some of the best direction, guidance, and best practices we've been hearing, the public will not be included in these meetings going forward. However, these meetings will be broadcast live on Cox Channel 11 and streamed live. The streaming can be done on the website at www.fh.a-z.gov. We anticipate, at least for now, that this will be going through the end of April. To help streamline this process, we will purposely remove, I'm sorry, we'll purposely remove and postpone agenda items from consideration, from the agenda that we anticipate the public would have an interest in, so that we can bring those back at a later time when the public can participate with those. Residents are also encouraged to email the mayor and council with their input and feedback on any item on the town council agenda after the council agenda is posted on the town's website. This is typically done the Thursday before the Tuesday night council meeting. We are also postponing the March 31st council work session, which was supposed to be going over the proposed user fee study. So I've talked about what we've done so far as it relates to the public. I want to talk a little bit about the workplace actions. From a workplace standpoint, the town has identified a number of what we would consider essential services and employees involved in the service deliveries for those essential services. Public safety, which is police and fire, those are essential services, public works and streets, parks maintenance, finance and purchasing activities, and also the court. I want to reassure you and the public that police and fire services and a lot of these services as we know them today will continue. Definitely, police and fire, no matter what, will continue as they always have. For those employees who currently work, that can work in jobs remotely, we will be implementing a telework option, so these employees can work from home. We anticipate that this will be happening probably starting tomorrow with some positions. Going forward, the town will continue to monitor the situation and make adjustments to our plans according to best practices and guidance received from public health agencies. Now, we heard just this afternoon that the City of Phoenix and City of Tucson have basically closed their cities and facilities. Sedona, we heard earlier today, also did the same thing. So we're going to continue to monitor that. I'm not at that point, at this point, to recommend that, but we will be very closely monitoring it. And if we were to get to that position or to that point in time, we would be identifying, again, the essential services. Again, police and fire will always be there 24/7. We would identify what services we would try to contain and maintain as much as possible. In closing, we encourage our residents to check out the latest news and information about the pandemic and the town's response on the town's website at fh.a-z.gov. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Grady. If you'd let me go on a little bit with some of the stuff that I've learned, and then we'll see, and as far as, we'll ask Aaron how much we can do, but I would like to mention that we've been in on quite a few calls, between White House calls and different agency calls, and then this morning was one from the governor's office, which is also going to be done tomorrow. What I wanted to bring this up because Grady talked about the other cities, and some of them are closing their facilities, and some of them are closing their restaurants and other businesses like that. And I wanted to read just by, you know, word for word, what we heard from the governor's office, and we have another call tomorrow morning, so, you know, you're going to bear with it. We're all bearing with the fact that things could change. But right now, the Department of Health Services and the CDC strongly recommend that dining establishments in areas of known community spread, which includes Maricopa County, discourage dine-in traffic and instead provide curbside pickup or drive-through service. If dine-in options are provided, social distancing measures should be implemented, providing space for customers to be placed at least six feet apart and limiting space for customers to congregate in areas of the restaurant. Restaurants should also establish a procedure that allows their employees to be distanced from one another. Restaurants should establish protocols that allow customers to have food delivered to their cars and should maintain high hygiene standards and require frequent hand washing between each customer interaction, and should institute symptom checks for workers before they're allowed to enter the establishment. So that's as of this morning, and that's what we're going along with here in Fountain Hills for now. I also wanted to mention that we are looking at expecting to sign a proclamation of declaring a state of emergency, which is a precautionary measure, and it allows us to respond to this rapidly changing health concern should we have to. So this will just be there. We have the ability to do that. It doesn't mean any more than being prepared. So that's what we're going to be looking at doing tomorrow. I put an editorial that's going to be in the paper tomorrow also, and again, with the information changing so much, it wasn't a lot of technical stuff, but I wanted to mention Bob Burns and Brent Crookshank and Ryan Winslet. For all that they've done, they've been great partners throughout this, getting the facts out and being a resource for our community. I wrote about the staff's efforts and the council's efforts, as we know, to address our health, and which also addressing our budget, public safety, making sure that everyone knows that their well-being is our top priority. We're getting this new information every day, and we're going to be very vigilant. And I wanted to share one other web, it's not really a website, it's an email address, but it's a Center for Disease Control, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Health Emergency Operations Center, which is with the Department of Health Services, and they really emphasize that today on the call as a great resource. Some people have been asking me, they have volunteers who want to do, what can we do? Who's coordinating? And this sounds like the place to go. So it's Health Emergency Operations Center, which is H-E-O-C at azdhhs.gov. And we'll have all of this in our minutes, and we'll have it on our website, but I just wanted to make sure that I got that out there because, as you could expect, a lot of people in our community want to dig in and help, and we want to make sure that we sort of direct them in the right direction. So I know that you had something you'd like to say, Alan?
Well, I just, I hope the citizens of this town fully appreciate everything that our town manager and mayor have been doing with regard to the coronavirus. I think the actions that have been taken have been absolutely superb. If there's something else that could be done, I don't know what it is. But you've been on top of it from the very beginning. You've made, in my view, the right decisions, and I just, I want to thank you for that. And just one other comment, this is obviously an incredible tragedy. Just before I came here, I saw the owner of a restaurant being interviewed. He was a chef and owner, and when you hear what he's going through, what his people are going through, and it goes up the chain, it's scary as hell. Also, before I came over here, I heard that Secretary Mnuchin said that unemployment could go to 20%. So I don't know what else to say, except this is a very difficult period.
Thank you, Alan.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir. Dennis?
Would you mind repeating the website that you were recently citing, please?
Sure. It's actually an email address, but you could probably find a website because it's on the Department of Health Services. It's called Health Emergency Operations Center. And the email that they directed everybody to is H-E-O-C at azdhhs.gov. So that's Department of Health Services. And after tomorrow at 10 o'clock, there may be more, and I'll make sure. And I did email that to you all a little earlier today also, and we'll make sure that we get that information on Facebook and all that other good stuff. David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dennis, are you done?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
I didn't want to walk over you. I just want to thank first responders, our police officers, and our firefighters who can't do social distancing. That's not acceptable. So these men and women, I'd like to thank them. And someone who I've never thanked before, but I think needs recognition, is all the employees of all the grocery stores here in town. I've run the gauntlet of going to the grocery store, not looking for toilet paper. But they have, the cashiers and the people that stock the shelves and everything are really doing an unbelievable job, and I don't think they get thanked enough for what they do, providing us our food and everything. Tensions are high in the store, I've seen, and because of the running out of things. But I just wanted to say that Safeway and Bashes and Fries, I think, have done an unbelievable job servicing our community, and I just wanted to thank them for their hard work.
Thank you. That's very nice and very appreciated. Mike?
No, just real quickly, I would totally second what Councilman Magazine and Councilman Spelitch said. I think everyone has stepped up, and I just too want to thank everyone and commend everyone for what they have done and what they will continue to do.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman LaCron.
Thank you. I do want to diddle what everyone else has said, and I'm not trying to repeat it, but I do want to thank you, Mayor, thank you, Grady, and Aaron, for the success and the work and decision-making that you've done in the last few days. I also do want to recognize, as we all know, our doctors, our nurses, even the ones in town, who are putting their lives at risk to help all of those who are sick.
Thank you, Councilwoman. One of the items that's getting a little lost but is very important is the census. So I wanted to report that last Thursday, it kicked off across the country. As we all know, it's been done every 10 years since 1790. You can go online and do it right now. You don't have to wait for any kind of a solicitation or a letter or an invitation. It's www.my2020census.com, sorry about that, .gov. We all know that this determines our seats in the House. It determines federal funding that gets divided among states for things like schools and hospitals and roads. And just to mention that the universities that are now temporarily doing online learning, if you would have been here on April 1st, or, you know, but went home because of that or for any other reason, or went to another place, please be sure to fill it out on behalf of Arizona if you would have been here on April 1st, because that's the day that is the cutoff. And then, I don't think the whole thing will really be done until July or so, but it's just very important, and also, if you go and get in there and do it now, you don't, no one will come to your door, no one will mail you anything, and you'll be all done. So I think it's appropriate, you know, normally, at this time, we talk about what we did over the last two weeks, but at this point, I think it is appropriate that I mentioned that Grady and I went to a rotary lunch that was honoring first responders. And I apologize, I don't have the names right now, but it's Rural Metro and from Rio Verde, you guys back there, from Fountain Hills, Fort McDowell, and MCSO. And so I know that when the paper comes out, they'll have the pictures and the names, but we certainly owe them our gratitude all the time, and particularly now. And I look forward to having meetings soon where we get to see everybody's happy faces here. We'll be tackling the budget and trying to go on with the good, old, boring, everyday stuff. So with that, yes, sir?
Mayor?
Yes, Art?
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, you know, I just wanted to second what you said and what Alan said and what Sherri said and what Dennis said. I mean, of course, we all, and Councilwoman Spelitch said in regards to the services in town, the businesses in town, the public safety, all of the people that are working through this crisis. But I wanted to add to that and see, what else can we do? I think that the businesses locally are going to be hurt by this. And I know in the past, there have been times when you have back-to-school and the state waives sales tax on certain timeframe for people to shop. What can we do as a local council? Can we put a two-week, a three-week sales tax moratorium so that we encourage our town residents to shop local, go to the local restaurants? What can we do? This is not an agenda item, but I think it's something we need to be thinking about, and it should be something we do and help these businesses locally very quickly.
Thank you, Art. Appreciate that. And I know that today, when the president spoke, he mentioned something about some relief that, you know, especially like restaurant workers and others who are just really going to be in a fix for a little while. So I appreciate that, and we'll give it some thought. And Aaron looks like telling me, "Don't talk about this," right?
No, except, Mayor and council, except to say that to respond to Councilman Tolles's question, I'm happy to, one, keep track of what other communities are doing to provide whatever relief we can, and to the extent we can model that behavior and look at other reasonable options. Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. I didn't want to overstep that. We don't have an agenda item, but I'm glad that we're able to talk about these things. I think a lot of us want to get together and talk about it, what's going on. And we really appreciate it, and we appreciate our staff and everyone that's here now. If you're ready, we could go on to the next item, which is, well, what?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, listening.
I'm sorry to stop you. Apologize for that. But if I could speak to Aaron and say, "Aaron, opposed to following everybody else's favor, we should, in Fountain Hills, try to set precedence for the rest of the valley." And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Understood, Mayor and council. Thank you.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're not doing the call of the public, and again, that kind of information will go forward, as Grady said, when we have meetings and to figure out ways to let people have input in the future. We'll go to the consent agenda. If everybody's okay with everything there, if I could get a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, and again, our regular agenda was altered a bit so that we would be going now to item 8B, which is consideration of approving professional services agreement with Green Play. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to go ahead and have our community services director give a brief report on this request that's before you tonight. Rachel?
Great. Thank you, Grady. Mayor, council, you just mentioned, you know, getting back to the boring, day-to-day stuff. I'm grateful that this item remained on our agenda tonight. I realize that we have a very, front seat to a very big crisis on our hands right now. Tonight's item is really looking to getting back to business when we see the end of this. I don't know what time that's going to be, but I'd like to preface this with the idea that when we get through this and when we return back to business as normal, this is something that is on the forefront for the Community Services Department. So my role, obviously, as the director, is to keep an eye on that forefront and where we're going long-term. So that's why this item is, while it may seem a bit far down the road, particularly with what we have focused on right now, this is something that's important, and I appreciate you guys hearing this out tonight. So tonight, we're talking about a Community Services Parks, Recreation, and Trails master plan. For those of you on the phone, those council that are on the phone this evening, I'm not sure if you can see our screen, so I am going to take a little time to read some of the items so that you are fully engaged with what we're talking about. Please feel free to stop me if you have questions. So what is a master plan exactly? It serves as a blueprint for the future of our department. We've not had one before for the Community Services Department, so it will be a unique and first-of-its-kind. It's also identified in our strategic plan that we brought forward at the beginning of the year that integral long-term planning and analysis and strategies are needed. We need to be looking long-term. Okay, great. Why do we need this master plan? Again, it enables us, not only as staff, but you as our government, to assess our needs and the interests of our community as it relates to our community services. And it helps us prioritize. It helps us prioritize allocation of resources, whether it's for facilities, rehab projects, programs, services, whatever that might be. And it helps us do so in a very transparent way through fiscal responsibility. It helps us ensure that it's publicly supported, politically prudent, and environmentally sound. Okay, cool. What does the master plan do? It evaluates our existing system with benchmarks based on both regional and national standards and potential service-level improvements. So where do we fall on that benchmark, and how do we improve? It helps us incorporate the visions, goals, and tasks outlined in the strategic plan that I mentioned. And it helps us document the priorities, the trends, and the demands of the current population, as well as charting a long-range plan for the anticipated population growth and/or change. It also helps us outline projects, the anticipated costs, the potential funding sources, and the operations and maintenance implications. If we make changes, how is that going to affect us long-term? Where are we going to go, and how are we going to do it? A big key item here is it also provides a record of citizen engagement so that we can help bring that discussion to the table. And it helps us build credibility, support, and consensus with our community members and stakeholders. Again, this is kind of, it gets, it really informs our citizens about the needs of our parks, and it also helps them be aware of what community assets we already have. It helps us identify capital improvement plans and the fiscal requirements there. It helps us to guide decisions about the parks, facilities, infrastructure, programs, and services, and then develops recommendations on how to do that. Ultimately, this really sums it up. A successful master planning process will transform a community's vision into tangible plans to create outstanding recreational opportunities, well-maintained facilities, and a customer-focused and responsive park system. So who's going to create this master plan? Well, with staff taking the lead, we are looking with the help of Green Play LLC. And Green Play, their mission is to help organizations dedicated to parks, recreation, and open space achieve community goals. We went out for a RFP. We had three viable responses. This is who, after review with this team, this is who is the recommended vendor. The vendor has worked with more than 500 communities and businesses across 46 states. Now, while that makes them a pretty big player in that, they also have quite a bit of local experience, working with the city of Glendale, Coconino County, and the town of Florence, just to name a few. How much will it cost, and do we have the funding? The project cost is just over $65,000. The project is budgeted in this current fiscal year. The funding would come from a combination of a community services budget, so our current general fund that is allocated to community services, as well as supported by development fees. It does also have a 10-year shelf life, so this is something that would be a document that would be guiding us for the foreseeable and extended future. Who supports this effort? This has been presented to both the Community Service Advisory Commission and the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, both of which I'm the staff liaison for. Both of them have unanimous support. It's been under discussion with both our town manager and the community services staff, all of whom also support this effort. We've also had discussions, preliminary discussions, with members of Vision Fountain Hills and the Fountain Hills Leadership Academy, all of which are also on board with what this plan would do and help us achieve. So what are the next steps? Tonight would be the consideration of awarding the contract. If it's approved, staff would begin the process with Green Play to conduct the assessments. One of the biggest items as part of this is a community survey developed, and then a feedback session scheduled, sessions, I should say, it's more than one. That effort would be timed with what made sense, with what's going on, again, in our current affairs, as well as when our residents are here in Fountain Hills. Implementing a community survey in July is probably not prudent, so we'd work with them on that. There would be reports and presentations to staff, in both commissions, and then a final presentation and findings to council. We indicated by December. Again, that timeline is very fluid based on what is going on in our world. At this time, I'd be happy to answer questions about the plan or where, what items you may have of concern.
Thank you, Rachel. Questions? Okay, Mike? Be so polite.
Thank you, Mayor. No, thank you, Rachel. I'm totally in favor of this, and I know you pointed out that the cost is split between development fees and general fund, but, and you had the numbers up there, but for public's sake, I mean, the bulk of it, $45,000, is coming from development fees, which comes from developers and housing projects and that kind of thing. So I think that's important to point out. And then, secondly, when it comes back to us, is it something that we're going to approve? Or is it something like, "Well, here it is, and this is kind of our recommendation, and that's it?" Or how does that work in terms of?
My anticipation, it would come back for review, be able to really get the feedback from the council level to say the items that may be of significance or priority so that we can take, put those into, again, order of implementation. If there's items on there that come back that say, "No way, no how would council support this particular portion," then we can obviously make edits and feedback there. But there would be a feedback process, and then it would come back as a final draft, so to speak.
That's, and if I may, good question, Councilmember Charnell. And absolutely, this is, all master plans ultimately come back for the council to approve. is, all master plans ultimately come back for the council to approve because what you'll typically see is there will be recommendations in there that will have some feet and some things that will require some additional resources in the future. So, council has every right to learn more about it and actually even make perhaps modifications they feel it's necessary before the adoption, but the council will be considering the adoption of it when it comes back. And I would hope maybe we have a work session and then it comes back for adoption.
Absolutely.
And then, is there any coordination needed with the general plan, which will be voted on in November? I'm sure they'll take all that into consideration when they put this together.
Yes, that would be one of the several documents that we'll be providing to Green Play to integrate into this process. So, that, the idea being that whether it's the general plan, the community services strategic plan, the town strategic plan, all of those different elements should dovetail into supporting what this master plan looks like. And it sounds like that makes it a lot of plans, and we have a lot of different plans in a lot of different places. Essentially, they're all guiding the town in the same direction, but have different focus.
Rachel, what's the methodology being used for the survey?
That's a great question. We actually had, I mentioned, we had three different responders coming back to us, and all of them came back with a different format. It was really critical to me to have a statistically valid survey that was not specific to just an online resource. So, this will incorporate a home, direct mail into our community here, as well as public information sessions so that the people can participate in person. And we will have an online resource as well, but that home mail piece is really going to be a critical one to make sure that we're reaching folks that may not be aware or may not capable of participating with us.
A number of us on the council, and the council as a whole, at times have said, wouldn't it be great if we could survey the public on various things? And I'm wondering if, after we see that survey instrument, whether or not we might be able to piggyback on that in terms of one, two, three questions that we've been dying to ask the citizens for years. I think, you know, I've done a little bit of survey research, and I know that length is a big deal, and how many minutes it takes to fill it out and answer, and all of that. So, we don't want to interfere with the intent of this, but if there's a way to piggyback with two or three key questions that we'd like answers to, I think we ought to look at it.
Okay, certainly.
Any other questions from anybody? I did have a few, several, actually, emails and that were in support of this and including the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission and the Community Services Advisory Commission, so, and then some others. So, I wanted to let you know that we did get public input after all. Any other questions or comments?
No, I move to approve professional services agreement with Green Play, contract number 2020-055.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Liz. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you. I do have copies of the presentation if anybody wants one, but it'll be included in the packet as well. Or in the.
It'll be in the minutes. Yeah, thank you. It'll be online. Next, we have another item, a purchase agreement for shade and net in Arizona, of Arizona. Grady?
Yes, I'm going to have Rachel continue on with this item. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. I forgot that that was the next one. I do not have a presentation on tonight's. This is a extension of a contract. This is our vendor that does a lot of our shade canopies. We are moving forward with continued rehab and redevelopment of Four Peaks Park. That is in need of a shade structure, so we're looking to extend this contract so that we can implement that with the CIP funding allocated for that. We are also looking to extend it so that we have the contract authority should we have damage, vandalism, or monsoon issues coming up this summer, so that if there's damage, we can take immediate action to replace it and not have to wait for council to resume in the fall.
Thank you. Alan?
I think you partially answered my question just now, but the last sentence in the staff summary says, "Any remaining funds would be utilized for unanticipated shade projects, such as storm, wind, vandalism, and so on." How much, how many remaining funds are we likely to have?
We anticipate the shade over at Four Peaks to be roughly around $100,000. So, this extension, I believe, is, and I don't have it in front of me, is 130?
Thirty-six thousand.
Six? Mm-hmm. So, the remaining would be roughly a $36,000 balance so that we could utilize that if and when needed for, as I said, unanticipated things.
And I presume that staff would come forward and get approval for the use of that $36,000?
Well, if we adopt this contract tonight, it would just, again, it would be, if we have damaged, I'm going to use an example of Fountain Park, if the shade structure over the musical instrument playground were to rip in a monsoon-related, we would utilize that $36,000 to replace that shade structure. That's what that funding would be for. Generally speaking, that runs, again, it depends on the size of the shade structure, but it can be anywhere from $8,000 to $15,000 depending. So, generally, those purchases are done at the staff level.
And just to clarify, the funding is budgeted for this?
Yes.
So, if she did need to tap that additional $36,000 in capacity, it is in their operating budget for that?
Yes. It's not new funds. It's just authorizing us to use them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I'm glad that you mentioned the budget, that it's this year's budget. The item previously, we mentioned, you mentioned development fees, just so that, you know, it's pretty clear, because I know everybody's pretty distracted, but we also have projects that are in progress, so we wanted to be able to continue with those. We have development fees that, as you all know, are in these very narrow places where they're allowed to be spent, and again, that they were in this year's budget. And as we go forward, just in general, keeping as much economic activity going as possible while still being, of course, prudent and knowledgeable of what's coming, I'm happy to be able to move forward with some of these items tonight. So, if there aren't any other comments, I would take a motion. Yes, sir.
I'll move to approve the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Contract Number 2017-072.2, Second Amendment with Shade and Net of Arizona, Inc.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Rachel. This next item is about our streets and Grady and Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this item before you is for a cooperative purchasing agreement with a company that typically does our annual pavement contracting in town. It's with MR Tanner. You recall, last year, we did have quite a bit of input from the council on the areas they thought we should be doing, and based on that, Mr. Weldy got in touch with IMS. IMS is the firm that actually does the maintenance of our database, and actually is helping us eventually bring back a 10-year pavement management plan to you. But based on the input we had from council last year, they wanted to have the downtown included. We also had some carryover of funding that was in the Streets Fund that we're trying to also, in addition to what's been identified downtown, also use that additional funding for this year rather than have it carryover to next year. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Weldy, who has some other comments and remarks regarding this item before you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity tonight. What we have here is another excellent example of the town staff utilizing our limited resources to search for the best opportunity for us to get the most for our money. In this particular case, the city of Chandler solicited bids. Having opened all of those bids and reviewed the options that they had, they selected, and they've done this in the past, MR Tanner, for their work scheduled out for several years. This is an incredible opportunity for us to take advantage of Chandler's much, much larger contract and be able to utilize the majority of that unit pricing, some of it a little higher, some of it a little bit lower, but certainly reasonable for the amount of work that we do in the locations that have been shown, not only in our IMS report, but also direction from the council. I would like to note, as part of this, that two maps are attached. One of the maps is the downtown area, and I would like to make sure that we provide some clarification on this. All of the areas that we have marked in red on these exhibits that are in the packet are the downtown area that we plan to do and undertake ideally before the end of June, and things are a little bit volatile right now, but we still intend to move forward. The areas that are shown in blue are in the future, and we consider that the very near future. The reason that they are not colored red right now is because we have projects that are going to be impacting our streets. A good example is the intersection here at Town Hall at La Montana and Avenue of the Fountains. A roundabout will be constructed there in the very near future. On La Montana, south of the Avenue of the Fountains, on the west side of the road, the Keystone Project will have some utility impacts and some off-site impacts there. There will also be impact from Keystone on the Avenue of the Fountains, west of La Montana, on the north side of the road, and also to the median on La Montana between our U-turn and their proposed in-and-out or the U-turn, excuse me, median opening that will be part of their driveway. So, based on that, and our knowledge of how difficult it is to keep a lot of this construction traffic off of this new pavement, we are proposing to come back and tackle those very shortly. We do not have those dates, but we are anticipating it will be very soon. And lastly, on Verde River, south of the Avenue of the Fountains and Paul Norton, this area right here, we are simply going to be crack-filling and sealing because those areas are in relatively good condition and relatively new pavement that meets our adopted subdivision standard. Are there any questions in regards to the downtown map before we move on to the proposed residential?
Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Justin, on the, once you do the Verde River stretch, say, from the avenue north to Palisades, the current parking, striping, and arrangement, is that going to stay the same, or are you going to take a look at doing something differently?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we are certainly taking a look at all of the pavement markings, the signing and striping in this area. There's going to be certainly some impact. And Verde River, south of the avenue, is a little bit unusual because it's extremely wide, and there are some portions of it that have on-street parking slightly angled, and some of it that has parallel parking, and that was decisions that were made some time back, and we certainly plan to revisit what we can do to accommodate as many on-street parking spaces as possible.
Yeah, and that's really the area I was referring to, because I always found that strange. I mean, I kind of know why it happened, but yet, to me, it's kind of confusing. I think it needs to be uniform, whether it's diagonal or parallel, whatever, but, plus, that's just my two cents. Plus, it seems wide enough, you could probably have diagonal on both sides, but, you know, that's what you guys get paid the big bucks for, so. And that, so, when you said the blue areas are going to be done very soon, you mean, like, a year from now or still within?
The idea is to attempt to tackle them, if not in the end of June, depending on construction projects, immediately after the projects are either ended, or while they're finishing up, we will come back into that area. It will be some of this year's money and a small portion of possibly next year's money and/or the unspent funds that we will use to do that. The intent is to try to our best to comply with the request from the council to do the downtown. And so, it's a little bit fluid moving here due to the construction projects. We are being very optimistic that we'll be able to get in there in the next few months.
So, most of that, you think, is part of the three and a half million that we're looking at tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, you mentioned Paul Norton, crack-filling and sealing. Is all the rest going to be mill and overlay then, or?
With little to no exception, all the areas shown in red here are going to be a full depth, meaning all of the pavement in those areas are going to be removed. We are going to regrade and recompact the subgrade, and we are going to bring all of them back up to our subdivision standards. Currently, as part of this, as we were leading up to this, we came out, or we had a contractor come out and drill holes in all of the asphalt in the downtown that was identified as needing replacement or meeting the criteria. We discovered through that analysis that the majority of this simply does not meet our own subdivision standards, and so we have to take it out and put it back correctly. At least, in my opinion, that's what we should be doing. If we're going to do work, we should ask ourselves to do what we would ask someone else to do as part of a development or a construction project, which is meet the construction standards and the subdivision standards.
Were you going to talk more about the residential portion, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Are there any questions about the downtown?
Yes.
Councilman?
Mayor?
Oh. Alan is going, and then you go ahead, Art.
We've talked in the past about how we can bond new construction. Some of this is what you're describing as new construction, and I know this is absolutely the wrong time to ask the citizens to approve bonding and pay more money, but for the future, have you determined whether or not there are a lot of other areas that would be reconstructed versus maintained?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, absolutely. As part of our 10-year plan, we will be identifying areas that we could potentially use bonding money on for reconstruction or the majority of the construction, and the maintenance will be a different project, and we will not be using bonding money for that. The forthcoming 10-year plan will outline all of those different disciplines and how we arrive at that and how we arrived at the dollar amounts for each of those disciplines over the period of time necessary to accomplish not only the maintenance, but the bond work if approved. Thank you.
If I may, just adding to what was stated by Mr. Weldy, so, the firm is getting very close to wrapping up the 10-year plan for the pavement management program, and basically, they've identified the needs for the next 10 years at $55 million. Based on our current level of funding, it's $25 million that we have of our own funding, so that $30 million gap will have to be made up through likely other sources, which would be probably bonding. So, they will identify as part of that the streets that would be recommended to be bonded for, and then what we would be doing with that other two and a half million dollars a year that we spend on maintenance, how that will go far and how that will be utilized for preservation of the current streets. So, I hope that answered your question.
It does. Thank you. Quick follow-up. So, we have a little over $3 million this year. As we look ahead to the next year or two, do we have any sense as to how much we're going to have?
I hate to tell you this, but it's pretty level funding, so we're looking at the same $2.5 million a year, assuming there's no decrease in the highway user revenue fund, which is the gas tax. For us, it's been pretty much remaining stable over the last several years. That's why we were kind of excited if the legislature was going to possibly pass that gas tax increase, because if that increased, even if we only got, like, maybe, you know, a third or 50% more of that, it would have made a big dent in what we have to deal with each year.
I wouldn't get too excited about that.
No, I heard it's not going too far right now. I heard it's kind of dead.
Especially now.
Yeah, I agree.
Art, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would second what Councilman Magazine just said about not getting too excited about the legislature passing a gas tax, and I also would be very cautious as to getting excited about any of the existing projects that have been approved for the downtown actually moving forward anytime soon. All of you are aware that the financial markets have taken a massive hit. This is not going to just go away. I don't think that a lot of these discussions we're having and thinking that everything is just as normal as a month ago, we should be very cautious in regards to what our expectations are for development downtown. And I would ask whether or not anyone has reached out to these developers as to where they're at in the process and what they expect based on what has happened. on what has happened in the marketplace currently, what their timeframe is to move forward with these projects.
Thank you. Grady?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far off the agenda, but I do, I will tell you that John has been in touch with, our Development Services Director has been in touch with the Keystone developers, and my understanding is they are currently moving forward. The hospital project is, while it's not downtown, they're still trying to make sure that that's going as scheduled as well. John, are there any other things that we're aware of? The other ones, we've had discussions with outside developers, have been really more or less not finalized at this point. They weren't ready even before this downturn that we've seen the last week and a half. They were not at that point yet.
Thank you. Any other questions about the downtown? Okay, I guess we'll go to the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Before we go into too much depth on what I refer to, or we refer to as the residential area, I would like to note an error in my text. The one with the bullet point that says Fountain Frontage Road should actually be the Fountain Hills Boulevard Frontage Road, Chama to Segundo. Having said that, in the residential area, we are absolutely going to do our best, based on our estimates and our measurements, to complete all of the items that are shown here. And the reason I brought that to your attention is we intend to primarily tackle the downtown first, and we may or may not come across some unknown items when we were removing that pavement, and we may have to adjust a little bit. But note, these streets are in our IMS report and scheduled for maintenance. And so while we are clearly waiting on the 10-year plan for the areas that we cannot complete, and while we are making adjustments, we will do our best to come back into the residential area. All of the streets are important, especially the residential or local streets, and do what we can to finish up. If we don't have the available funding as part of this year, we will return as quickly as possible to address these locations. With that, I will be glad or happy to answer any questions that I can about this contract with the MR Tanner Company.
Thank you, Justin. Questions? I just wanted to mention that I'm glad what you just said, because I know that there's somebody that lives on Emerald who had said, and they're seeing Indigo close to Emerald. So I just want everybody that looks at this list and doesn't see their street that we're aware, we know, we agree, and we're doing what we can. If there's anything, I mean, if there isn't any other comments, I guess we'll take a...
No, I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor, because I'm sure we're going to get questions from other residents on other streets as well, but these are basically taken from the IMS report, and these are the ones that we're doing in a certain order anyway, correct?
Madam Mayor, council member, that is correct. We are still working on the premise that we are going to save what we can save. And so all of these roads that are identified here have a certain PCI level, which is a pavement condition index, and it is within the budget based on the funding that we have. We are simply going to mill and overlay these for the majority, two inches or more. Some of them are only two-plus inches, though a lot of it's going to be full depth. But yes, they're identified in the report, which is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages long.
Yeah.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else, can I get a motion?
With that, I'll move approval of the motion as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
I think, I think it's unanimous. Wow. Oh.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
We're getting feedback on the... Thank you so much. So I guess that takes care of it. Thank you, Grady. Thank you, Justin, so much for that information, and we look forward to being able to tackle more roads as we go forward, of course.
You're welcome.
So our next item is just a follow-up. Any council discussion or direction to the town manager? This doesn't actually technically go there, but I forgot to recognize one of our planning and zoning commissioners who had served from March 2018 through April of 2020, Matthew Boick, and we'll get this to you, Matthew, and thank you for your service. Any other comments for the good of the order? Yes, sir?
Hi, Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Zaneco.
Oh, okay.
I want to address this...
Mayor, I'll have something to say when after Alan. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I want to address this to Grady. It's an issue that I raised at the retreat, and my concerns have become much more acute. President says that this could last till August, September. Of course, nobody knows. It could be a couple of months. It could be a year. We don't know. We are going to take a tremendous hit on sales tax, tremendous hit on sales tax. And I'd like, a couple of things. I'd like to see, I thought I'd raised this, but maybe I didn't. I'd like to see some modeling done. If X, then Y. Try to get some sense as to what the downside might be. If this...
Can you call him?
If this lasts three more months, six months, and nine months, I know it's rough, but we might be able to do it based upon our receipts now, going forward.
So, good, good point. So this, the Finance Director and I started having the same discussion because clearly we're concerned about that as well. So we have been tracking really well year-to-date, but that's year-to-date, not looking forward. So we're going to definitely do that, and we'll do that as part of our, I'm still anticipating we're going to have our budget workshop on April 14th. So we'll try to start getting working on that. The good news is, as far as our state shared revenue that we get, which is income tax, vehicle license tax, highway user revenue tax, a lot of those sources are from prior years. So we can count on those, at least from a stability standpoint. But the sales tax, you're absolutely right. I believe our local sales tax is, is it $8 million a year or so? And we have been noticing some good numbers because now we're getting definitely all the online purchasing, and all that's been very helpful, so. But we will definitely do that.
I may be wrong. I think that sales have been around $23 million per year, and I don't know if that's close to being accurate or not, but I really think we have to take a good, hard look at this. And I want to do a follow-up. I'm glad we're having the retreat, the budget retreat, because I'd like to know what of our resources are fungible. I'd like to know what monies we have that we can, and I raised this at the retreat as well, that we can husband away, not spend. Put it in the rainy day fund, put it somewhere. I don't care where we put it. But I'd like to have a pretty specific list as to what is fungible, and obviously not talking about state legislative mandate issues where they tell us we can only spend it on X, Y, or Z. But we have other accounts where we have the flexibility to move money around. I think we have to look at this as the crisis that it is and not wait for, and we're not, and I'm pleased at what we've done, what you've all done so far. But on the money side, I think it's absolutely critical that we put money aside, not spend money that we don't have to spend. Now, if it's part of the legislative mandated categories, well, I guess we can spend it and try to maintain the infrastructure of the town as much as possible. But if it isn't mandated, I'd like to know how much it is, what the category is, and what if we don't, or if we don't spend it, even though we budgeted it, how much it would save us.
Understood.
Art?
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, thank you. I think we're already far off agenda items in this discussion, but I think it's clear everyone is concerned in regards to the future and the financial stability of our community. I'm more concerned as to the financial stability of the businesses and the residents, and just reading a most recent report today, the President's Economic Council believes this may be worse than 2008, and this could be ongoing issue. And whatever we can do to set a precedent, and I agree with Councilman Dennis indicating that, you know, we need to set the precedent here, and if we were able to come out very quickly with a response to this for the local businesses and have some sort of relief for them, which may be, to a certain extent, publicity speaking, but it would send a message to the residents of this community that we need to shop local, and we need to support people in this town that own property in this town, and that ultimately need to survive. And the businesses are going to be dramatically hurt. I just read a report, and you're not privy to this because you're in a town council meeting. I'm sitting at my office watching some of these news reports as I'm in this meeting, and, you know, the City of Phoenix just essentially shut down all bars and restaurants. You know, this is now spreading. There's some businesses in town that are now being asked to shut down at 8 o'clock, which, you know, that isn't too far off the timeframe that some people close in Fountain Hills anyway. But that being said, Aaron, when, how quickly could you come back with us with a proposal that we can act on?
Well, yeah, Mayor and Council, I guess my answer to the question at this point is, I don't know, because part of the issue is what, again, we're pretty off the agenda here, but what do we actually want, can we do, and what do we want to do, right? I mean, that's a discussion that I think we need to have as a council in the first place with respect to, are we talking about just, you know, offering? Because I don't know that, you know, financial assistance is what we're discussing here, nor do I think that that's permissible. But to the extent we, you know, we're talking about having discussions with the state or local or county authorities for, I don't know, some sort of supplemental emergency aid, I don't, I just don't know what we're really talking about here, so it's difficult for me to answer as to what kind of proposal you're suggesting that I come back with. I'm happy to look, to brainstorm ideas and have those discussions with staff, but that's the best answer I can give right now.
That's what I think we should do, because we are way off of what we probably should be doing. But let's, you know, be in constant communication. We'll be talking to Grady and to Aaron and anybody else, and just keep in mind that if this proclamation of emergency, declaration of emergency it brings with it, probably something that we would be able to fall back on if the federal government does decide to have some relief, we would be, we would be able to see how that could affect us. So I think maybe we'll put this to bed right now, because, you know, it's not an agenda item. And, well, I appreciate it very much, Art, and everyone who's had these great ideas, and trying to help our community the best way that we can. And please email us, call us, do what you would like. We're here for you. We're here for each other. And if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Aye.